Well, as the story goes, a watch pot never boils, but it's boiled and it's six o'clock, so we can get started. I will call the May 5th meeting of the mayor and council to order. Everyone, please rise and we'll have the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Bridges, would you do our invocation, please?
Could you please stand? Let us go to God in prayer. Dear great God of heaven, we thank you for this day. We thank you for allowing us to get up in our right minds and our health and strength. Father God, just lead us in this meeting on tonight. Every child, every adult, every person in this room, Father God, that you would grace your spirit and your blessing upon them, dear heaven and father. And as you bless this mayor and council to lead this city according to your will, Father God, these and all of the blessings in your dear son, Jesus Christ's name, we all do pray and let every heart say amen.
Amen. The next item on our agenda is citizens' comments, and we don't have any. So the next item will be our minutes from our April meeting. Do I have a motion to adopt the minutes as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt the minutes as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. The next item on our agenda is our mayor and council announcements, and we'll start with Councilman Gibbs.
Good evening. I don't have a lot. I'd just like to say for all the mothers, grandmothers, guardians, aunts, everybody that takes care of somebody, I want to wish you a happy Mother's Day on Sunday.
I agree. Happy Mother's Day to everyone. I know this past weekend was a little damper on the Mayfest, but I think everyone that stuck around had a good time, and my wife went up and spent some money, so as usual. And I hope everyone else that wanted to go took that opportunity. That's all I got.
Councilman Ogden.
Good evening. Great to have such a big crowd tonight. I'd like to say thank you to John Lang and the sports and recreation department, or Parks and Recreation Department. You think it's sports and rec, but it is Parks and Rec. And the pickleball, which is just staying packed. And the castle, the renovation of Castle Playground. You folks with little ones, I hope you've been out to see it and enjoy it. Thanks to April and Ally for producing the Mayfest extravaganza this weekend. We've got market nights coming up and lots of exciting things at the amp. And I would also want to wish every mom and future moms, Happy Mother's Day.
Councilman Bridges?
Of course, all of us want to say Happy Mother's Day. But I came up the MLK on my way over here to the meeting, and the water was just going everywhere at the water park, just everywhere. My granddaughter said, "Nana, put it over, let me be the tester." I said, "Girl, you gonna get pneumonia." But the water park is getting ready to be open on March 24th. You guys bring your kids. Also, it's a lot going on at the amp. Take the kids to the amp. There's a lot of activities for the kids at the amp. Make sure you utilize the amp for the kids this summer, and it'll be awesome. But everybody should be ready for the water park. And just glad you all are here tonight and bless all these babies. Congratulations. It's just awesome to see the babies in the audience and being recognized, and that is an honor. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say I want to thank our employees, April and Ally and that whole group that worked so diligently every year to get our Mayfest going, and the other, the police department, the fire department, the street department, they all worked together and made it really a great day, even though it rained, it didn't put the damper on our spirits, because we still stopped raining and people still came out, so it was great. Okay, Mr. Brooks?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to echo what Councilman Ogden said about Mr. Lang and the job he's doing with our Parks and Rec Department. He's been in the position about a year now. He grabbed the bull by the horns and made some great changes, some great upgrades, along with the current leadership. He's been able to hire some leaders from outside the city that's come in and made a huge impact, so just thankful. If you go by any of our parks, you'll see that they're all well manicured and well taken care of, so just appreciate the job he's done. Again, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank April and Ally for the Mayfest, and it was a driving rain, it was a cold rain, and then it would slack up a little bit, and it'll start raining again. So I come up in the middle of the rainstorm, and they were still a good crowd and a lot of folks, so we were excited that we had to turn out that we did. And then congratulations to our youth council. They had a great year. We had the opportunity to spend some time with them throughout the year, but we just finished with some time together upstairs before the meeting started, and they've done a great job. It's been the most active youth council that we've had, and really one of the most informative in terms of keeping the mayor and council, myself, informed of everything they have going on. And congratulations to our youth with the track team and the things that they've done. And had the opportunity to work with youth for 30 years, and a lot of times you hear people talk about, "Well, I don't know what this world's coming to," or "We're gonna be in trouble with these kids these days," you know, that kind of thing. But I'll tell you, from firsthand experience and being able to work with them, we're in good hands. We've got some great youth and some great leaders coming up, so thank you guys for what you've done.
Okay. Well, as, you know, people do things in our city, we like to show them our gratitude, and we have a really special one tonight that... Oh, I'm sorry. I'm just gonna skip over the approval and go on down and recognize our officer. I have two amendments to the agenda for approval. So the first one would be the mental health awareness month proclamation that will be added in with our other proclamations, which is item number six. And then Physical Year 2025-2026 Budget Public Hearing is gonna be at the end, and that will be item 13. So do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented with those two amendments?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the agenda items for consideration with two amendments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, now, let's get to the fun stuff. Yeah. So, but anyway, we try to recognize any employee. You've heard us talk about John today and April, but we have one of our outstanding police officers here tonight. And Chief Richards, you want to come up and tell us why we're recognizing this nice young man, Corporal Kane Moore?
Thank you very much. So, March 13th of this year, Corporal Kane Moore responded to the Wells Fargo Bank on Bankhead, along with a lot of other officers, to a call of a person in the parking lot with a gun, loading it, and was gonna go inside and shoot the employees. And so, again, a lot of officers were en route, but Corporal Moore arrived first, encountered him in the parking lot, and was able to take him into custody without anybody being injured. And so, I wanted to recognize him here tonight. It's an honor and privilege for me. I've watched Kane grow up through church through the years, and he graduated from Central High School in 2015, joined the United States Marine Corps, went and served our country overseas, and then came back and joined us in 2020, and it's been an honor to work with him. And so, it's an honor and privilege for me tonight to recognize him. I want to present him with the chief's challenge coin that we have for the police department, and I think Mr. Brooks would like to present something, too.
Yeah, and as chief presents him with the chief's challenge coin for the police department, I would also like to present him with a city challenge coin for the work that he did that day, but not just that day, but for the work he does every time he goes on shift. So we really appreciate what you're doing. That was a job well done the other day.
Okay, now, for the moment we've all been waiting for, with all of our stars that are here, all of our young people, we're so excited. We have our Recreation Track and Field 2024 and 2025 state champions here tonight we're going to recognize. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to read the proclamation for the 2024 first, and read off those names, and then I'll read the 2025. And as I call your name, if you'll come stand right here in front, then we can have a picture, okay? Whereas, "The mayor and council a tremendous amount of pleasure and pride to express to all players, coaches, and parents of the Carrollton Parks and Recreation Track and Field Team our sincere congratulations for qualifying and competing in the 2024 Georgia Recreation and Parks Association State Track and Field Competition. Whereas, the 140 athletes that competed this season with Coach Aura Chisholm and Coach Tristan McEwen had an exceptional year, and whereas, the team had 60 individuals along with seven relay teams qualify for the GRPA State Track Meet, of which 40 individuals and seven relay teams placed in the top eight in their individual events. Whereas, 26 individuals along with six relay teams earned a medal by placing in the top three places. Whereas, Carrollton has had a record 23 GRPA state champions, 13 individuals, and six relay teams crowned, and first year in history for the state record for six state records and all four, I think it's 400...
Four by 100.
Four by 100 relays to earn the state title now. Therefore, we are pleased to publicly recognize the following first place winners of the 2024 State Track and Field Competition. So if I call your name now, if you'll come and stand down front. Trinity Ackles, Jima Baskin, Hayden Bexley, Payden Bexley, Deland Chisholm, TJ Clifton, Destiny Collier, Austin Coverson, BK Crawford, Will Crawford, Baylen Hagan, Jaden Harris, Tyler Harris, Tamara McKinney, Kylie Merrill, Cartson Moran, I'm sorry, Koflin Phillips, Kobe Pinkard, Mason Reese, Deshaun Riggs, Keva Rhodes, Jayden Raul, Rayleigh Russell, Amavi Smith, Jordan Taylor, and Grayson Wathall. Okay, all right. Okay, do we have the coaches here also? Y'all want to come up and join us? Go get that photo up. Go get that photo up. Oh, wait, I gave her the wrong one. Aura. Yeah. Oh, I gave you the wrong group. I gave you the twenty-five.
Is it twenty-four?
Is that twenty-four?
Yes, ma'am.
Are Alum twenty-four? Okay, now, for the twenty-five Track and Field, Office of the Mayor, Carrollton, Georgia, Certificate of Recognition, Carrollton Parks and Recreation Track and Field Team, 2025 GRPA State Champions. Whereas, it gives the mayor and council a tremendous amount of pleasure and pride to express to all the players, coaches, and parents of the Parks and Recreation Track and Field Team our sincere congratulations for qualifying and competing in the twenty-five GRPA State Track and Field Competition. Whereas, a hundred and ten athletes that competed this season with Coach Aura Chisholm and Coach Tristan McEwen has an exceptional year, and whereas, the team had fifty-four individuals, along with four relay teams, qualify for GRPA State Track Meet, of which forty individuals and four relay teams placed in the top eight in their individual events. Whereas, thirty individuals, along with four relay teams, earned a medal by placing in the top three places. Whereas, Carrollton had a record nine GRPA state champions, six individuals, and two relay teams crowned the state title. Now, therefore, we are pleased to publicly recognize the following first place winners of the twenty-five GRPA State Track and Field Competition. So as I call your name, if you'll come back and stand in the front. Trinity Ackles, Dylan Chisholm, Starr Collier, Braylon Hagan, Carson Moran, Copeland Phillips, Kobe Pinkard, Jaden Rowe, and Cheyenne Walker. Okay, let's give them a hand.
So Jared's like, you gotta get over that. And I was like, okay, well, yeah, so I guess we're playing more ball. I just don't know when or where. So, yeah, it's exciting.
We'll move it back for a second.
We'll give them a minute to get out. I'm, I'm sure they want to stay for the main event. Next item on our agenda is Carroll County Chamber of Commerce Milestone Recognition. And I want to say, we had a great event on Saturday night, was lots of fun. We had Run with the Roses, and we all wore our hats and our, what do you call them?
Fascinators.
What?
Fascinators.
Fascinators, yes. And the guys were dressed up, too. So, yeah, it was a lot of fun.
Yeah, I didn't wear a fascinator.
Well, yeah, David would've had a hard time wearing one, but.
And we had such a great time. Thank you all for being there.
You're welcome.
Mayor Kasen, Mr. Brooks, City Council, on behalf of the Carroll County Chamber of Commerce and Carroll Tomorrow, we're proud to recognize the City of Carrollton as a milestone member in celebration of forty years of membership for the Carroll County Chamber of Commerce. As the chamber celebrates the seventieth anniversary, we are grateful for the city's continued commitment to working alongside us to strengthen and grow businesses throughout Carroll County and Carrollton, Georgia. This ongoing collaboration remains essential to building a vibrant, forward-thinking community. We extend our sincere thanks and appreciation to the mayor, city council, and the entire city of Carrollton, and your team for your steadfast commitment to business growth in Carroll County and city of Carrollton. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Oh, wow, great. Okay.
Come on, David, you need to be in this one, too.
I'm adding stagehand to my resume after this.
Brian will be talking about the trade trip.
All right. The next item on the agenda is the Chamber of Commerce Trade Mission Trip.
Thank you again, mayor and council. Appreciate you having us tonight. In addition to the seventieth anniversary of Carroll County Chamber, we are celebrating this year the twenty-fifth anniversary of Carroll Tomorrow, our public-private partnership economic development agency, and began in two thousand. And interestingly enough, the first project that Carroll Tomorrow worked on and recruited and was awarded was Magna Deco Star, the Canadian company out of Toronto located in the Carrollton Industrial Park, and really started the process over the last twenty-five years of some very positive activity on behalf of Carroll Tomorrow and all of our members, inclusive of the city of Carrollton, and how we do business recruitment countywide. And so, it's been an exciting process for that organization as well, kind of a sister organization to the chamber as we walk through that process. And over the years, for the most part, we've recruited companies through the State Department of Economic Development through Georgia. We've had opportunities to recruit international firms, we've had opportunities to recruit local businesses who are family-owned and stay here and grow here over the years. In most recent years, we did that very thing in the recruitment of Ya'chio Manufacturing of America. They're a Japanese firm. They came through the state process, but in doing so, in doing that recruitment activity, we visited them on two occasions in Tokyo, once before they decided to locate, and once immediately after they made the decision to locate where they were. In fact, that was twenty, beginning of twenty fourteen was the second visit they had just announced, and it was right when Carrollton High School won the baseball state championship. So we awarded them baseball hats, which was the same week that the Little League World Series was won by the Tokyo team. It was just, it was a neat part of the process of being there. But, and I've been able to do that, and been fortunate to do that in the communities that I've served over the years. But direct foreign investment recruitment is a very hard thing to do and to maintain, because it requires relationships. And so, when we identify companies that we, we may want to try to recruit, it takes background information, it takes research to do that, and then it takes, really, relationships. Those are the key things. I had the opportunity last year to accompany then-President Kelly with the University of West Georgia to visit the study abroad program in Spoleto, Italy. It was my hope that I would be able to visit existing industry in that region and potentially identify companies that may make sense to have a location in Georgia. What I found out was a whole lot more. University of West Georgia is celebrating their twelfth year on the study abroad program in Italy, and what I found was a great deal of similarities between the city of Spoleto and the city of Carrollton, and in the way they engage education, healthcare, and existing industry and workforce needs. Their economic base is built on legacy family business ownership in much the same way that Carrollton is. We met with the city council. UWG had just signed an agreement to extend their partnerships beyond humanities and the arts and, and education, and then they just signed a deal last year to work with the healthcare industry to have nursing students attend study abroad programs. And so, they're going from one cohort to at least three and are continuing to grow. In doing so, we met with the Spoleto City Council, and we, I was amazed at their excitement and interest in doing more with the city of Carrollton. We met with their Chamber of Commerce. They asked to be involved with our businesses. They asked, what could we do to further engage relationships? And in doing so, what could their companies and their family-owned businesses do to engage ours? And so, immediately came back and started looking at how we grow that partnership, because, again, one of the things that was missing in a lot of our direct foreign investment activities was sustainability and the relationship piece. And I think we found that in Spoleto, Italy. So I want to turn it over to Mr. Brooks, kind of let him walk you through the opportunity that's in front of you guys. But this is really, excuse me, this really is answering a request on behalf of the city and their business community to do more outside the scope of what the university has done so successfully up until now, and as they continue their study abroad program. And that is, how do we engage each other? How do we foster business development, both culturally and from a manufacturing standpoint? I think we may have found an incredible opportunity to do so.
Thank you, Brian. We are, we were very fortunate to be invited by the chamber to be a part of this, this year's trade mission that will take place later this month. And we've been in contact indirectly with officials from Spoleto, Italy, and we have been working through some sister city proclamations and resolutions, and we, we hope to enter into that type of agreement with Spoleto. This will be a delegation of local business leaders, about five or six local Carrollton-grown businesses that will be meeting with local Spoleto business leaders in Italy. We'll, our delegate from the city, delegation from the city will be meeting with the elected officials in Spoleto, as well as some healthcare officials, and also with some, the, the exchange program with the University of West Georgia to try to see how we can foster, continue to foster those types of relationships. And so what we would ask tonight is for you guys to vote to just support the city's delegation in entering into conversation with the officials of Spoleto, at the minimum, a memorandum of understanding of, of our partnership and working towards a sister city status.
Okay. Well, you've heard what the request is, and I think this is a great opportunity for our city, for our university, and for our business owners and our economic development here. So do I have a motion to support the chamber's trade mission and also support our delegation as going on this trade mission with the hope of becoming a sister city with Spoleto, Italy?
So move.
Okay. All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you. Motion carries. Okay.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay. Well, we're back to our proclamations. Our next proclamation is for the Salvation Army Week, and this is May twelfth through the eighteenth. And, you know, we, we are so blessed to have a Salvation Army place here in our city, and they do a lot of work. And they keep in touch with us as to, you know, what's going on, and their training, and all of those kind of things and opportunities. And, of course, you know, they have the, the store over there where you can take stuff to repurpose and let somebody else enjoy. And, Mr. Uglum, are you still on the board?
I am.
Okay. And we have our, one of our council members, Mr. Bob Uglum, that serves on the board there and has served for quite a while.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So, this is from the Office of the Mayor of Carrollton, Georgia, proclamation. National Salvation Army Week is May twelfth through the eighteenth. Whereas, the Salvation Army has been serving those in need across the world for a hundred and fifty-four years. And whereas, the Salvation Army has been serving the people of Carrollton for twenty-nine years, both physically, emotionally, and spiritually. Whereas, more than forty million Americans live in poverty, and millions more live near the poverty line. And whereas, approximately half of America live paycheck to paycheck, and one-third of adults between eighteen and sixty-four live in low-income households. And whereas, the Salvation Army is present wherever needs are greatest, especially during times of crisis, where vulnerable citizens are more at risk of becoming homeless, food insecure, addicted, or spiritually tired. And whereas, the Salvation Army invites the people of Carrollton to show their love and support to their neighbors and help the organization continue to provide life-changing aid to those who need it most. And whereas, it is fitting and proper during the National Salvation Army Week to recognize the tremendous impact of voluntary volunteerism and community service in the
Any opposed? Same sign. Thank you. Motion carries. Okay.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay. Well, we're back to our proclamations. Our next proclamation is for the Salvation Army Week, and this is May 12th through the 18th. And, you know, we, we are so blessed to have a Salvation Army place here in our city, and they do a lot of work. And they keep in touch with us as to, you know, what's going on and their training and all of those kinds of things and opportunities. And of course, you know, they have the, the store over there where you can take stuff to repurpose and let somebody else enjoy. And Mr. Uglum, are you still on the board?
I am.
Okay. And we have our, one of our council members, Mr. Bob Uglum, that serves on the board there and has served for quite a while.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So this is from the Office of the Mayor of Carrollton, Georgia, proclamation, National Salvation Army Week is May 12th through the 18th. Whereas the Salvation Army has been serving those in need across the world for 154 years, and whereas the Salvation Army has been serving the people of Carrollton for 29 years, both physically, emotionally, and spiritually. Whereas more than 40 million Americans live in poverty and millions more live near the poverty line, and whereas approximately half of America live paycheck to paycheck, and one-third of adults between 18 and 64 live in low-income households. And whereas the Salvation Army is present wherever needs are greatest, especially during times of crisis, where vulnerable citizens are more at risk of becoming homeless, food insecure, addicted, or spiritually tired. And whereas the Salvation Army invites the people of Carrollton to show their love and support to their neighbors and help the organization continue to provide life-changing aid to those who need it most. And whereas it is fitting and proper during the National Salvation Army Week to recognize the tremendous impact of voluntary volunteerism and community service in the city of Carrollton. And whereas the National Salvation Army Week is an opportunity to encourage citizens to serve their neighbors in need alongside the Salvation Army with their resources and their time. And whereas the Carrollton Salvation Army location is providing daily thrift store events through National Salvation Army Week as a representation of customer appreciation. Now, therefore, I, Betty Kason, Mayor of the City of Carrollton, do hereby proclaim May 12th through 18th, 2025, as National Salvation Army Week in the city of Carrollton, and encourage all citizens to join together to give back to the community in any way that is personally meaningful. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Carrollton, Georgia, to be affixed this 5th day of May, 2025. Okay. Well, congratulations. Do we have someone here?
We do.
Okay. All right. So if y'all come up and we'll present this to you. And the other thing about Salvation Army, and I think it's kind of appropriate to mention this, is the fact that this is Mental Health Month, and I don't know that a lot of people ever even realize that Salvation Army offers mental health support to a lot of people, and that's just another one of the great things they do. Our next proclamation is for our National Historic Preservation Month, and that is awesome. May's a busy month, in case you didn't notice.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. You amended the agenda to make number six, the Mental Health Awareness.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
So what am I going to do?
So do mental health and then do, yes.
Oh, okay. All right.
Thank you. Sorry.
Okay. Get our proclamation straight here. And this is, May is also, as I stated previously, Mental Health Awareness Month, and our Carroll County Mental Health Advocacy Program is one of the most near and dear to my heart. Not that the others are not, but we all work together with partnerships. But anyway, I'm really excited that they're here, and you'll see the city lit up in green this week, and that is for our mental health awareness. Office of the Mayor, Carrollton, Georgia, proclamation, Mental Health Awareness Month, May 2025. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, and whereas promotion and prevention are effective ways to reduce the burden of mental health and conditions, and whereas a strong body of research that supports specific tools that all Americans can use to better handle challenges and protect their health and well-being. And whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation and in our local community, whereas with early and effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full and productive lives. And whereas each business school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, organization, and citizen is responsible for promoting mental wellness and supporting prevention efforts. Now, therefore, I, Betty Kason, Mayor of the City of Carrollton, by the virtue of the authority vested in me by the laws of Carrollton and Georgia, to hereby proclaim May 2025 as Mental Health Awareness Month in the city of Carrollton. Together, let us foster an environment where mental health is prioritized and every person feels empowered to seek support without fear or shame. Through awareness and education, we can make a meaningful difference and create a more inclusive and supportive society for all. I have thereto, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Carrollton to be affixed to this proclamation on the 5th day of May, 2025. And I see Ms. Laurie's here, and if anybody else is here with the mental health. And we have Gloria's in our, well, I don't know if I can call her interim, but our executive for quite a while now. And we have a new executive.
It started yesterday.
Gloria's been telling me she's going to retire for several years now.
It's official.
It's official now.
Jenny Richard.
Richard, okay. And so this is Jenny Richard, who is going to be our new executive director. Thank you, everybody. I don't know if any of y'all are familiar with chair yoga, but I saw the other day that if you got up and down 40 times, it helped your balance. I think we've earned our, our chair yoga certificate for tonight. I got one more. And this is our Historic Preservation Month, and we're so excited to have a committee that works very hard to preserve our history here in the city. So from the Office of the Mayor, Carrollton, Georgia, proclamation, National Historic Preservation Month, May 2025. Whereas the National Trust for Historic Preservation established May as Historic Preservation Month in 1973 as a way to promote historic places for the purpose of instilling national and community pride, promoting heritage tourism, and showing the social and economic benefit of historic preservation. Whereas Historic Preservation Month can instill awareness of local historical significant buildings and landmarks to the residents of Carrollton and surrounding community, and whereas Historic Preservation is an effective tool for managing growth and sustainable development, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. And whereas Historic Preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds. And where it's important to celebrate the role of our, of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as people. And whereas Carrollton community continues to demonstrate its commitment to preservation as it grows and develops through ongoing historic resources surveys, the nomination of historic resources to the National Register of Historic Places, the protection of its traditional neighborhoods, and the recognition and rehabilitation and restoration of historic properties. Now, therefore, by the authority vested in me, this governing body, and on behalf of the mayor and council of the City of Carrollton, Georgia, council members do hereby proclaim May as National Historic Preservation Month, and call upon the citizens of Carrollton to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating as the special observance. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Carrollton to be affixed to this 5th day of May in the year of our Lord, 2025. All right. Congratulations, and we've got some members here to accept. And I want to recognize Mr. Dr. Tom Ford, who's been our board chair for the last six years, and stepping down.
Yeah, it's sad.
Yeah.
We need to pass the torch.
Yeah. So anyway, we're very excited.
One more center.
I'm never in the right place. Madam Mayor, thank you so much for your support, and Council, thank you, and many more years to come.
I hadn't read this much aloud, I don't think, since high school. The next item on our agenda is the rezoning request of 415 Matthews Avenue and Matthew Avenue, okay, from R15 single-family residence to C3 neighborhood commercial, the applicant is higher ground properties. Before we get into that, I have something I need to read to you. At this time, we'll hear rezoning requests. Since many of you may have not previously attended a public hearing on a zoning request, I want to quickly review our procedures. No person in attendance shall speak unless formally recognized. Upon rising to speak, each person recognized shall state their name and home address. Speakers must not employ tactics of intimidation, profanity, or threats of violence in their comment. All comments shall be directed to the mayor and council, not to the petitioner or those in opposition. In accordance with Georgia law, each side, not individual, is allowed 10 total minutes of public input. This means that all those speaking in favor of the request shall have a total of 10 minutes, and all those speaking in opposition of the request have a total of 10 minutes. Time devoted to questions and answers that the elected officials may ask should not be counted against the time limitations. Since we do have limited time, please try to avoid restating what another may have already stated. The applicant shall be allowed to speak first in order to present the application. Others may then speak, indicating first their support or opposition of the application. The applicant will then be allowed time for rebuttal. Rebuttal must be limited to points or issues raised by the opponents to the application at the hearing. Okay. And we have Ms. Studdard now that will explain, oh, okay.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to add, I will be keeping the time for the 10 minutes for both sides, and I will let you know when you get to within two minutes of the 10, if you, if you get that far, just so. I don't, didn't want anybody to think I was interrupting them. And I'll also be keeping up with any questions that folks speaking against might have to, so that the petitioner will be able to address those questions.
Okay. Ms. Studdard?
Thank you. The only rezoning item you have on your agenda this evening is a rezoning request from R15, which is single-family residential, to C3, which is neighborhood commercial. The applicant's higher ground property are requesting a rezoning of two parcels totaling 1.32 acres. And the request, the purpose of this request is to create a common zoning designation for these two parcels with 924, 926, and 932 Maple Street in anticipation of a mixed-use development that will be along the Maple Street corridor. The Planning Commission reviewed this request at their April meeting. They did recommend approval of the requests with a vote of three to two. They also included a couple of conditions as part of that recommendation. I'm going to go over those briefly. Number one, no commercial structures are permitted on the 1.32-acre tract. The portion of the property fronting Matthews Avenue must remain single-family residential. Currently, there is a single-family home there owned by the applicants. I do believe the intention is for that home to remain, but we did want to memorialize that with a condition. Number two, no public access is permitted on Matthews Avenue. If required, fire lane access shall be gated with a Knox lock or a similar apparatus that is approved by our fire marshal to prevent residents or the general public from utilizing this drive. There was some discussion because the applicant provided a concept for the entire development plan, not just this, this tract that's being rezoned, about access on the Matthews Avenue. This would eliminate any sort of public access. It would be a gated entrance if the fire marshal does require them to have a secondary access for the development off of Maple Street. I do believe the applicant is here if you have any additional questions.
Okay.
Good evening, y'all. My name is Brad Wilks. Like the members of this council and the rest of the community, my partner Keith and I want to see Maple Street, the look of it, the use of it greatly improved. And we believe that this request can be a small step in that, in that direction. These two tracks would support, as Ms. Studdard indicated, these two tracks would support our larger development that would be along the Maple Street corridor. I do think it is important to emphasize that this is a residential-to-commercial zoning in name only. These two tracks will remain entirely residential. 415 Matthews will remain single-family residential. That was always our intention. And in fact, we, it's, the, the actual overall use of this project is the opposite of moving from residential to commercial. We are actually taking a large portion, or proposing to take a large portion of our commercial tract and make it residential. We think that that will better protect the neighboring properties from what would otherwise more likely be a full commercial development. But I'm here if you have any questions.
Anybody have any questions?
I, I do. I think this is a great project. But is the woods that are back in there, are they like natural growth, old forever trees? Do you know?
There has been a tree survey done back in 2019.
Yes.
I have not reviewed that, certainly not lately. But I do know that there, there has been a, a tree survey done that identified, you know, the large growth sort of trees back there. There, you know, there was a project that ultimately got nixed by the pandemic that identified those trees. So I, we do have a tree survey of it, and I mean, a lot of it is just pine, but there are some larger hardwoods back there, I believe.
Well, and my question would be if our, our tree ordinance about preserving certain-sized trees, can you talk on that, Erica?
Yes, sir. We do have a section in our landscaping ordinance relating to specimen trees. Unfortunately, it's not a preservation-based tree ordinance. It's really a replacement-based tree ordinance. And so if you do have a tree that is identified as a specimen tree, for example, an oak hardwood, if it's 27 inches in diameter, breast, at diameter, breast height, in, in diameter, then they would be required to re- then they would be required to replace that tree with two larger specimen trees of the same species. So, for instance, if there was a water oak, for instance, that was 30 inches or 36 inches, they would have to go in and replace that oak with two oaks that are at least four inches in diameter, which is a little larger tree. But that's really, we really just have more of a kind of a recompense versus a preservation as it relates to...
And when you say replace, on that property?
Somewhere on the, on the development tract, yes. We do not have a tree bank currently.
Well, I don't know, I haven't walked those woods, but it occurs to me that Maple Street was named Maple Street probably because it had maple trees up and down it at one time, and there's not a tree on the street now, and I think that's kind of sad, that if we, if you could possibly preserve some older-growth trees, I think they'd add tremendously to your project, but I'm real excited about it. I'd ask and encourage you to.
Absolutely, duly noted, and quite frankly, I know sometimes graders disagree, but I know it's expensive to take down big trees, so... And I live on Kramer Street, we're surrounded by large trees, so absolutely, we'll do our best to maintain any of that that we can.
Okay.
I actually ran a business out of one of those buildings that's on this property, the one that sits further back off of Maple Street. My brother and I started a garden center in that location about, oh, 45 years ago or something like that, and so I'm familiar with the property, and, you know, that, that property has sat dormant for decades now, and I'd be excited to see something really pretty and useful to our community built there, so appreciate that.
Okay, any other comments?
I, I got another couple of questions.
Okay.
I refresh my memory about fence or how you do a buffer zone or anything for this.
That's another good Erica question, but I will say that, as I recall, that putting up a fence is the way to get the most efficient buffer, so we obviously are trying to have a relatively dense project, so we want to be efficient with our land use, so we definitely would include, I would imagine we would include a privacy fence.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, and he's correct, so you have options as it relates to buffers with unlike uses. So, the property that is adjacent to, and we're really talking about, just keep this in mind, that we're really talking about the larger development tract and not the tract necessarily that's, that's up for resorting consideration tonight. But you can do anything from a 10-foot buffer with a fence and landscaping to a 20-foot planted or a 50-foot undisturbed. And what Brad means by efficiency is you'll get the most efficiency land, basically space-wise, to do the fence and the planted at 10 feet, so...
And how high a fence?
I mean, it doesn't necessarily state, but typically there are, you know, six, eight-foot privacy fences when we see that. Again, all of that would be dealt with in plans review when the larger development tract is being considered.
Okay, any other questions?
Not right now.
You know, I'll add to, we, we obviously, we want to apply for the TAD designation when we do this project. That is going, I think that is going to give the city and the redevelopment authority, lots of stakeholders ample opportunity to, to work with us to get the project that everybody wants.
Yes.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments? Okay, all right. Thank you, Brad. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this project?
Madam Mayor, council, my name is Curtis Spivey. I live at 631 Longview, the second family to live there in 125 years, and so I'm familiar with the area. As far as Matthews Avenue property is, I've talked with some firemen who, in their opinion, thinks there'll never be a fire truck getting in and out of there and making any turns into a development. It's way too narrow, and this area will be steep and in a turn, the way I see it, not shown on here, but the way I see it coming in. And this just appears to be another way to ease in to C-3 zoning around the area, but I'd ask that you consider that, and since the applicant has mentioned the larger tract, our property is 60 feet from it, and so that is very close. And I would hope that you would address the drainage issue from Longview, about three and a half acres, and then the drainage of the property itself, because the houses be very close together, and there could be a river running between them at some times. I ask that you would also address, as nothing's shown in this drawing, is a retention pond underground, above ground with a weir structure to accommodate a seven-inch and 24-hour flood once in 100 years, and that the privacy fence you have mentioned would have no less than a top height of 10 feet. It could be two feet off the ground, but the visual obstruction would be there on all the property that joins off of Matthews, Longview, and Tuggle. We also would ask that any lights be put up, would point away from the adjoining properties to maintain the quiet and hospitable neighborhood that we're all accustomed to. So now, I would ask that not only would you make this consideration a dollar consideration, but you'd just make a good sense consideration for our community that's been there for well over 100 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spivey. Anyone else?
City council, how are you? Richard Aquata, 4014 Matthews Avenue. I also represent 4018 Matthews Avenue. Not necessarily in opposition to the project at all. I think that Maple Street could use the beautification. I think that where it stands today is just not what it could be. The only, the only exception I would say is kind of, you know, echoing what Mr. Spivey says, and probably a lot of folks in the community. Matthews Avenue is a narrow street. Our largest fire truck can't traverse that street as it reaches Longview and Matthews. So, I don't know how you rectify that. I don't know how the four curb cuts that are currently at this property on Maple Street don't suffice in some way, but I just ask that you leave the tree lines of Matthews, leave the access of Matthews. Do a speed study on Matthews. Go out there and take a look at the street. If city council comes up with the fact that it is accessible and we can, we can operate it through there, I mean, who am I to fight that, right? But I will say, do the due diligence. Take a look at it. You have four curb cuts on Maple Street. Maple Street is due to be widened at some point. Why push that traffic that way? And I understand it's, oh, we have a gate. How many apartment complexes in the city of Atlanta, city of Douglasville, surrounding areas, when those aren't maintained? Mr. Wilks will probably sell it at some point, and when it's not maintained, that will be a thoroughfare. That will be a thoroughfare. It will be created. From my house, if I want to go to Target, I go left. If I want to go to Tanner, I go left. I can go right on red. It is a shortcut from the west of Carrollton, the square. That is, Matthews Avenue is a racetrack. Come out and see it. Run that speed study, take a look at it, and see if you still feel comfortable on it. But you do have to plan. You guys have a responsibility here. It's a plan for 30 years. You guys, you guys will be gone. I'll be gone when this becomes an issue, if it becomes an issue. I love what he's doing. I absolutely love it. I think it's going to be great. I really do. I think some of the concerns that people have brought up as far as, you know, drainage and things like that, these are all things that need to be considered, and these guys are good at what they do, and I think they will consider those. All I'm asking for is to leave Matthews Avenue alone. That's it. That's it. But I appreciate your time. I know you guys are busy people, and you have a lot of things to do with your lives, so thank you for hearing me out, and I appreciate, again, what Mr. Wilks and we're trying to do over there. I just, just like, leave Matthews like it is. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Aquata. Anyone else to speak in opposition or in favor of it? Okay, hearing none.
I've got a question. Really pertaining to this particular track that we're being asked to look at for rezoning is very close to Matthews Avenue and ties on to a larger track that fronts Maple Street. What's the current zoning on the larger track next to this one acre?
C-3 commercial neighborhood.
Okay. Yeah, so, and, and Mr. Spivey, you indicated that this development was going to be within 60 feet of your property, that corners Tuggle and Longview Street?
Yeah.
Okay.
You have one house over the corner.
Right. Yeah. I'm just, I'm just looking at it on the tax map, and I'm not seeing that your property would have joined any of the property.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, for the record, we need the audience to come to the microphone because we can't pick it up otherwise.
Okay, all right. Mr. Spivey, if you'll come back to the microphone so we can make sure everyone is heard.
I believe you'll see there 0.92 acres on Longview Street, up one house from the corner.
Right, okay.
And then there's a lot on Tuggle Street that separates us from this property.
Okay, okay.
And the Jason property just joins this property.
Right, and the, the property that's already zoned, what they're asking for now is the property that, that adjoins, that 60 feet from your property.
Matthews Avenue property.
Okay.
The lot that's all developed that they own, it's already sold secretly.
Right. Yeah.
That property, that property that you're referencing now, that's 60 foot, that's really not in question tonight.
No.
But what we're asking along with this total consideration is everything that can be done to maintain our privacy, both visually and audibly.
Yeah, I, I just don't know that the property that's in question tonight is, is going to be affecting your property at all.
Well, it'll affect the total development because the applicant addressed it on the front page of the newspaper, showing that it would.
Yeah, I, I understand that he's, you know, but he's already got the zoning, he's requesting for this property, on the property that's 60 feet from your property.
Just leave Matthews as it is. Good thing. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to clear that up. I was just looking at it on the tax map, so thank you.
All right. So, do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, could I just clarify a couple of things before we get a motion? So, there were really, there were no questions for the petitioner to address, they were all just statements of concern, which can't, can't be tied to this zoning. In other words, you can't put those conditions because they, they don't have approval for their planned development there that they have shown, that in full transparency, they've shown what they intend to do through all parcels of land. But the things that they have, that Mr. Spivey, Mr. Aquata have talked about, what the fire trucks are being able to get in, the drainage issues from Longview, retention pond, all of that will be addressed in site review and plans review once the development has been, has been approved, when they come back to us for approval for planned development and, and the TAD funds and things of that nature. Lights and things, and, and all the things that they've asked about can be conditioned to their planned development when they get to that point. But in terms of what they're asking to be rezoned tonight, it's just, there would be no conditions of that, like that on there.
Okay. But the conditions that the Planning Commission has recommended, those will be included in what we vote on shortly. And just to, you know, we take all this very seriously, and I've talked to some of you, and, you know, there may be some alternatives that we can do to help Matthews Avenue to cut down on some of the traffic through there, so, but again, we'll, we'll look at those, and we, we appreciate people coming out and voicing their opinion, because if you don't, then we don't, we don't know anything. And we also appreciate people who are willing to invest in our community. So, with all that said, do I have a motion to grant the rezoning request of 415 Matthews Avenue?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the rezoning.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Yes, as I stated, we would, with the conditions that would be at the recommendation of the Planning Commission, those will be included in this motion. Okay. All right, so I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, the next item on the agenda is Resolution 0525, right-of-way abandonment, and this is a portion of North Cliff Street. Mr. Brooks?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As we've been talking about for quite some time now, we, we issued that RFP, it seems like, years and years ago, but we've been working towards this date to be able to develop the downtown lot in partnership with the developer, and so the first steps of that is going to be abandoning North Cliff, that will be, when the development is completed, will become a pedestrian walkway between the mixed-use development, the hotel, and our new conference center. So, we did, basically, we'll just be abandoning, abandoning that road.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. The next item on our agenda is the downtown development master agreement for the property west of the Arts Center, and this is, I'm going to entertain a motion to authorize Mr. Brooks and our city attorney, Ms. Melissa Griffiths, to execute any documents that are necessary that we've, in conjunction with this project. So, we've already approved the project, so we just now need to give Mr. Brooks and Ms. Griffiths the authority to execute the documents that's necessary.
Madam Mayor, we also need, you will be executing some of the documents as well, so authority for you to execute those as well, please, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, all right. So, do I have a motion to make that, approve the execution of the documents by Mr. Brooks, myself, and Ms. Griffiths, under what has already been agreed upon?
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The next item on our agenda is board appointment for Historic Preservation Commission. As you heard me say, Dr. Ford is stepping down as chair, so we have some other ones that we have. Can't get my computer to work. Okay. So, Ms. Studdard, you want to make that presentation, please?
Sure. The, we do have a few appointments to the Historic Preservation Commission this month. Ms. Susan Biggers had to resign from the Historic Preservation Commission, and at this time, I'm asking or requesting that you replace Susan with Mr. Lacy Robinson. He has indicated that he is willing to serve, and I think he will make a valuable member to the board. Also, Ms. Cara Johnson, who was here earlier to receive the proclamation, she was initially appointed in 2024 to fulfill a partial term, and so she has had excellent attendance, and she's been great on the commission so far, so we're asking that you reappoint her to a full three-year term, which would begin immediately. And then we also, as Mayor Kason mentioned, Tom Ford has fulfilled his two full terms on Historic Preservation Commission, and so we are asking at this time that you replace Tom with Julia MacLeod. I've spoken with Julia, and she has indicated a desire to serve if you guys should so choose. So, at this time, it would be a reappointment of Cara Johnson, and then appointments of Lacy Robinson and Julia MacLeod, if y'all want to do that as one motion.
Okay, do I have a motion to reappoint Cara Johnson and to appoint Lacy Robinson and Julia MacLeod to the His- and Julia McLeod to the His, Historic Preservation Committee?
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any question or further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The next item on our agenda is the Library Board. Mr. Brooks?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As we discussed in our work session, Ms. Carroll's term is coming up. It expires June the thirtieth, and we would ask that you, uh, she's been a very good member, uh, Mr. Hauser really likes her and she's been a productive member of the board, and so we would ask that you, uh, would, uh, vote to, uh, appoint her to another full three-year term.
Okay, all right. Do I have a motion to appoint, um?
Lisa Carroll?
Lisa Carroll.
Did I even say her name when I was going through it?
No. To the Library Board. Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, the next item on our agenda is our, um, budget hearing, and we have, uh, Mr. Bush here to present our twenty-five, twenty-six proposed budget.
All right, Madam Mayor. Uh, good to see everybody tonight. I know I'm separating a lot of us from taco night, so I'm ready to get out of here, so we'll, we'll try to make this as quick as we can. You received a copy of the draft budget a few weeks ago at our budget retreat, um, and we've just made a few modifications since then for some of our insurance and county fire reimbursements, so that's pretty much the same way. The final draft was submitted on our city website a week ago. It was also made publicly available to the public, and a notice of this hearing was addressed in the Times, Georgia, to the public. So, um, that's some of our protocols that we have to follow. We follow those, um, and today is our public hearing on the budget. We want to really quickly go over a few highlights for the public and also just to refresh your memory. First of all, I'd like to say on behalf of the Finance Department, special thank you to Mr. Brooks and also all the department heads for all the hard work that goes into this, um, each and every year. The department heads, as you know, do a great job managing their budgets each year, and that's why we're so physically stable, is because of the way that they handle that, and we're just so appreciative in the Finance Department. Uh, the total projected budget for our three main operating funds, general water and sanitation for FY twenty-six is sixty-eight million, five hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars. I'll go over just a few of the highlights that we have. On the revenue side, we're very blessed with a diverse mix of revenue sources. Um, that helps us weather any economic downturns, and most of our revenues for this year are projected based on our actual results for this year. So we feel that these, um, all these revenue figures can be easily maintained for this next year and any growth, which we do expect would be able to help us do any other things that we need to do. Um, we have a chart up here that kind of displays all that. I'm gonna start, um, with the blue, uh, which is one of the biggest portions, the seventy-point one million dollars, and that's our ad valorem taxes. That represents nineteen percent of our general fund revenue. The current, uh, projected budget for property taxes is six million dollars, and title ad valorem taxes on vehicles are a million twenty-five. Next is our sales tax revenue of seven million dollars. That is a nineteen percent portion of our budget. That's a four percent increase over the previous year due to our strong retail economy and obviously with the price of goods going up, that increases the cost of everything which translates to sales tax. We've seen this resource, revenue resource do really well in the past few years, um, and that will benefit us for our budget. Next, in the green, three point one million dollars, eight percent of our budget is for utility franchise fees. This is a slight increase from the previous year. Two hundred thousand dollars of that increase is from, um, electrical utility, and we're seeing a slight decrease in cable, um, utility, which kind of makes sense as people are moving to streaming services and away from some traditional cable options there. So, but overall that still is being successful. The largest portion that you see is the ten point nine million dollars, the twenty-nine percent of our budget, which is listed as intergovernmental. That is concentrated of revenues from intergovernmental agreements with federal, state and local grants, as well as our internal transfers. This year we have a, a four million, twenty-five thousand dollar transfer from our water fund and seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar transfer from our sanitation fund. Also, we do salary and benefit reimbursements from those funds to reimburse the general fund for the core administrative services, finance, HR, general administration, um, and also indirect costs in that as well. Um, this also includes our county rec reimbursement, um, of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. That's from county residents utilizing our rec services, and so we receive a reimbursement from the county for that, um, as well as nutrition grants that, uh, provide senior citizen meals and home delivery, which is a great benefit to our seniors, our community. And also our s- city school board reimburses us for the school officers and, um, resource officers and the crossing guards, um, and that's about four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars a year. So that's a big chunk, but a lot of it's internal, but some of it's also from our grant income. As y'all know, Haley does a great job trying to seek out all opportunities to help us fund budgets through intergovernmental, uh, opportunities, and we're so grateful for her for that. Funds and forfeitures is your next portion. That's our police fines. We budget a million dollars a year, every year for that. Insurance premium tax is seven percent of our budget and has increased two hundred thousand from the previous year. Occupation tax for our, um, new and current businesses represents three percent of our budget. Miscellaneous revenue of eight hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars is two percent of our budget. Most of this is from our interest income, which has done really well, as well as facility rentals for the depot and other recreational facilities for the public. Our tax revenues of one million ninety-seven thousand dollars, other taxes, that's our beer and wine taxes, energy excise and intangibles, and then also license and permits and charges for services for recreation and cultural activity. So that kind of comprises our whole revenue from general fund. And then also we have balanced this year's budget with no use of fund balance, so the budget is completely balanced without using any prior year fund balance. All right, we'll go to the next slide, which is our expenditures. Kind of get our overview here of our major functions with this. We have our police, our fire, recreation and cultural arts, streets and engineering, general administration and our community development. Some highlights of all these, as you know, there's a salary increase for employees that we discussed at budget retreat that's included in this. Uh, we did group insurance at a ten percent increase. We actually won't get that medical increase until twenty twenty-six calendar year, um, so, but we've already projected a ten percent increase for that for next year's fiscal year. Property liability insurance is at a fifteen percent increase based on actual quotes we've received. And then pretty much our strategy is for any capital items, we fund those through our SLOPS fund and try to minimize those to only essential needs within the, um, general fund, and so pretty much there's very little capital within this fund. Police, as you see, comprises thirty-three percent of our budget at about twelve point one million. Fire, twenty-one percent at just over eight million. Recreational and cultural arts, also twenty-one percent at just about eight million. Streets and engineering is five percent of our budget, and general administration, which is finance, HR, general admin, everything else, um, our facilities, uh, city hall, all the buildings is just over six million dollars. And community development includes not only the community development apartment, but also our, uh, downtown, marketing, Main Street, and that's just over one point three million dollars a year. That's kind of the summary of our, um, general fund. On our water fund, our budget next year is twenty-three million, three hundred and nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars. We have a, a broad revenue mix here of both waters, water sales, sewer sales, also taps from, um, new housing, new commercial that's coming into our community. Uh, we feel like these are all doing very, very strong in the coming year, um, and we feel like all of these revenue sources will be maintained. Uh, the water fund does have the same highlights as the general fund about salary increases, um, group, group health and property insurance. Will also includes two hundred thousand dollars of repairs and maintenance on our water tanks. Over one point two million dollars is just for chemicals to keep our water clean, as y'all have seen in the, uh, paper recently. Uh, you know, we were awarded very well on that because our guys do such a great job with that, and it takes a lot to make that happen, so. Um, and we also have over three million dollars in infrastructure and equipment upgrades that's included in that water fund. On the intergovernmental side, we also have about six million dollars of expenses on the water fund that is from the indirect costs and salary reimbursements and the four million dollar transfer to general fund. Water fund also was balanced this year with no use of fund balance. Moving on to the sanitation fund, the budget for next year is seven point, seven million, seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars. The biggest portion of this, most all of this is for, um, landfill fees, um, and our sanitation fees that have come in. Our biggest, biggest expense is the landfill fees to put all of that trash into Carroll County landfill. Um, those are budgeted two point two million dollars for this year and also an indirect cost of one point one million and a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar transfer to the general fund. We also have budgeted four hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year, this year, to purchase a new garbage truck, as you know, which we expect to fund from fund balance, and that's the only use of fund balance that we have in those three major funds. Also included in this budget package, that's, that's the big chunk, but we also have all of our special revenue funds, our hotel motel tax, which does great things for our tourism product development in our area, um, also our contracts with the Chamber and the Visors Bureau. That's gonna be about one point one million dollars of revenue this year, which we can utilize for those. And we also have special revenues for the tax allocation district, police technology, opioid settlement funds, hazmat, drug task force, drug seizure funds and the neighborhood stabilization program, and those are all captured within the wider budget that will be, um, passed next month. So as I said, this is our required public hearing on the budget, not voting on it tonight. The vote will occur in June, and Mr. Brooks and I are both available if y'all have any questions between now and then. All right, that's it.
All right. Any other, any questions?
I've got a few, but I'll ask them later.
No, I meant from the public, not from you.
Not from me.
Not from you, no. All right. Okay, since we have no questions, thank you, Kevin, and thank you all for, um, the hard work on this. I know this is not an easy task, and it does start about March, and so from March till we get it approved, so they've worked very diligently in getting this all put together for us. Okay, um, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Motion and second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned.